Okay. Let's call this committee a whole meeting to order, please, for February the twenty sixth. I'd like to acknowledge additional territory, our friends and neighbors of the Dene and Cree people of Fort Nelson First Nation, as well as the Dene's Ah at Prophet River. Please be advised that tonight's meeting is available for the public to attend virtually is being streamed and recorded. Counselor, are there any additions to today's agenda? Staff additions? No, mayor, thank you. Is there any public who would like to make comment? Online? Okay, adoption agenda, everybody's okay with what's on there? Good. That brings us to five point one. Is there delegation on online signed in? Perfect. So we have a discussion, we've asked for a discussion actually with the B C Emergency Health Services Group and today, I think we have a whole bunch of folks coming in Jenny Helmer, Chief Operations Officer, Paul Vallally, Chief Quality Planning Coordination Officer, Jenna Dietz, Senior Executive Director, Jonathan, who we know, and Nathan, who we know. So, welcome.
Thank you so much for inviting us, Mayor and Council. We're excited to be here.
Yeah, so we're here to really talk about the service interruptions at the hospital. Some are, some are calling them diversions. We don't want to call, we don't want to use that word. It's just service interruptions as far as we're concerned. And, you know, we know that that's causing some difficulties, I guess, for additional work for you and for patient transfers. And so we, we thought we'd like to have a conversation about how we can mitigate some of that. What some of the issues might be and who we need to talk to if, if we need to, to try to mitigate, I guess, what those, what, what those barriers might be to care at the time when we have these service interruption because it seems to me these, I've spoken to mayors around the province who for years have been dealing with these service interruptions. It just seems that it's different with our location, our remoteness. And you folks would really understand some of the nuances of that because you've been dealing with, you've been dealing with these service interruptions in these other communities. We've been extremely lucky that we've had a lot of staff who worked hard to keep these service interruptions from happening here. But they've caught up to us. And so you would see some of the differences. I mean, we, we've heard about some things that are happening or aren't happening at the time of a diversion. But you live it every day and have been living it for multiple years. So we're interested in your thoughts. Some of the mitigations that you might have done already and anything we might do going forward. So I'd like to turn it over to you if, if you would, please.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I think I can start and I can talk a little bit about some of the challenges we're facing and mitigation strategies. And I do want to echo what you said already is that Fort Nelson is unique when it comes to hospital diversions. As an organization, as individuals, we have been dealing with hospital diversions or service interruptions across the province for years. The fact that when Fort Nelson goes on service interruption, there's no healthcare facility for nearly a thousand kilometers between Fort St. John and Watson Lake and the Yukon has is a unique situation for us as an organization and we've had to adjust some of our strategies to reflect Fort Nelson as a community Northern Rockies municipality as a duty or geographical location. So one of the mitigation strategies is that we have done during the service interruptions is aggressively trying to bring in additional ground resources, more so than we might for other municipalities. Depending on the other municipality's circumstance. So during the service interruptions, we've flown in crews before, we've upstaffed local crews. We essentially try to get as many paramedics on the ground as possible, as well as letting our provincial systems know as early as possible that Fort Nelson is going on service interruption. So that we know that if we have to transport a patient from Fort Nelson, that it's most likely going to be an air resource that we're going to require, weather depending. So we have our Patient Transport Coordination Center in the loop to ensure that we can have timely air resources as required. We have brought in local on the ground leadership during each service interruption to ensure that we're, that we have that leadership on the ground to work with all of our partners in our organization to ensure that we have speedy care for patients and speedy transport as needed. So the first two service interruptions, that was myself personally on the ground. And for the last service interruption, Nathan Cook took on that role. And we also bring in a lot of our virtual assessment team. So we have specialized paramedics and Vancouver Dispatch that can help our crews on the ground with some additional assessments. We have paramedic specialists, which are specially trained advanced care paramedics that work across the province for clinical assessments and clinical guidance to our ground resources. And we, as well as our secondary triage hub clinicians, which are specially trained paramedics to assess lower acuity patients to see for other routes other than taking them to hospital across the province. So as soon as we know that there's a service interruption in Fort Nelson, we have our ground crews loop these specialized paramedics in with every single assessment to ensure that we have the highest level of assessment that we can for each patient, that we're ensuring we get the right resources to the right patient at the right time. And we also have access through them to loop on our EPOS or our online emergency physicians to if we need doctor intervention as well or assessment. And I guess I'll pause there for any questions because that's a lot of information.
Is that sustainable? I guess that's my first question, whether or not that's sustainable. If that's something that, you know, are you, are you guys? Are you guys performing, performing workarounds? I mean, if you are, it's a miracle that you're able to do that and we appreciate it for sure, but we don't want to see them these as workarounds, right? We, we need to make sure that this is, well, first of all, that we don't have these service interruptions, that we're working on that, first of all. But secondary, when we do, are all the things that you talked about sustainable? Can they, can they go on for the long term? I guess that's my first question.
I'll, I'll let Jenny take this question as she has the provincial lens for our organization.
Yeah, thank you through the chairs. Thanks, thanks so much for having us tonight. I think it gives us an opportunity to, you know, share some of the pieces that we've been able to put in place. I met some of you at U B C M and, and Jenna and Les and we heard, you know, really clearly what some of your challenges are. And Jonathan and team of, and Leah put in place some really strong pieces to, to catch some of the challenges. Specifically, when we talk about service interruptions, this is new territory for all of us across the entire healthcare system where all the, all of the healthcare system is under tremendous staffing challenges. And so how we respond to it, it has become our, 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 our challenge really. And I think we've, we've risen to that in a, in different ways. And specifically, as Jonathan just spoke to, bringing in paramedics where we have capacity, sharing that capacity throughout the region. And that is something that B C E H S is, is a little bit unique in that we are a provincial system. We're not, we're not bordered by regions. So where one region is struggling, and if we have a region that is not struggling, we do have the capacity to move that capacity into the region that needs it. And it's not just with ground, it's also with air. And we have interim Senior Provincial Executive Director on the line here, Les Cleverly, and he can speak a little bit to that around the, the air support that we can, we can move throughout the province. And matching the needs of the patient to the care that we're able to provide as well. That's another piece. One of the, one of the considerations around service interruptions is that we have created a provincial system so that when hospitals and communities want to go on a service interruption, they have to follow our process. So they notify us that they want to do this. It's a request. They come in in many forms throughout the province. And then our regional lead will have a conversation with their regional lead to discuss what they've put in place in order to get to that place. So have they exhausted all of their staffing abilities? Have they explored telehealth? What have they done at their end to also shore up the system? And Jenna can probably, probably speak a little bit more clearly to that. She's been involved in some of that work. But all of this, what all of this work is doing is, is making a more cohesive healthcare system so that we're each understanding where the other challenges are. And then identifying gaps where, where we can do differently and where we can do better. And, and some of what I'm hoping we'll take away tonight is to understand, you know, where you feel like the service is not being met. Is that within our ability to change? And if it is, then we will take it away and we'll continue to work on it. So Les, Jenna, Nathan, if any of you want to add to that, please, please do, and Jonathan as well.
Thank you, Jenny. Thanks for having me, Mr. Mayor and Council. As Jenny mentioned, my name's Les Cleverly. I'm the interim provincial senior executive director for the Patient Transfer Network involving critical care and our air ambulance program. Back to your original question about sustainability, I just wanted to highlight that Fort Nelson, as Jonathan mentioned, is a, is a very unique geographical location. It is one of the only areas in B C where we actually have a ad hoc provider in the fixed wing environment. So Villers Air is, is literally servicing that area to the best of our ability and your hospital's ability. There's no other ad hoc carrier in the province that has a fixed wing resource such as North, sorry, Fort Nelson. So the sustainability part, I, I think, you know, right now, we have a lot of emphasis put on our call intake. And we've developed a process that if a call originates in Fort Nelson, through our Patient Transfer Coordination Center, it's automatically flagged and escalated to the operations manager who looks at that specific call to determine the suitability of utilizing a local crew with Villers Air. If the patient is ultra high acuity and exceeds the clinical limitations of the local crew, then we look at utilizing our dedicated critical care resources to moving that patient to the most appropriate level of care. If the patient is low to medium acuity and matches that local level of care, then our first, first look is to get Villers Air involved in moving that patient out of Fort Nelson. In the event that our critical care resources are not available and the acuity of the patients are higher than the local crews can look after, we then look at utilizing Alberta or the Yukon. And I will say since U B C M and since implementing this process, we've able, we've been able to activate Villers Air on six transports. We have personally been in, like, within our dedicated fleet, we've been into Fort Nelson seventy one times since, since September. So I, I think with this process in place, it is a very robust algorithm on, on utilization and deployment. But it seems to be ensuring that we're delivering timely and effective service and really focusing on that equality for the northeast sector of B C. I'll pause there if there's any questions.
Sure. So I, I guess I have a question and, and, and thank you for involving pillars. We, we appreciate that. It shows that our trip to U B C M maybe had a bit of an impact after all. So, so thank you for that. But I, I, I wonder when it comes to transferring patients and, and we go on to a, you know, I'm, I'm sure you have a matrix for what decides, you know, whether or not somebody's transported. Maybe that's what you were trying to explain to us just a few minutes ago. But when we don't have that level of care here, does that matrix change at all? That, you know, would, would people become more critical because of the distance and the fact that we don't have the hospital care that they need? Does, does any of that change? And I'm not sure if I'm making myself clear on that question, but.
So I think I could take that, unless you want to take it less.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a great question. So I wouldn't say our matrix changed. It's just a different circumstance. So B C H S is completely geared towards getting the patient to the closest healthcare facility or the closest, most appropriate facility in a timely manner. So the, our decision making changes in that the reality is, is we're not bringing patients from town into Fort Nelson Hospital or from Toad River into Fort Nelson Hospital. Wherever we find the patient, our options are for closest facilities at that point, Watson Lake or Fort St. John by ground or even further afield, depending on what the nature of the patient is. So this goes back to part of our mitigation strategies of bringing in these provincial assessment resources early so we can determine rather quickly, what's the, what's the nature of this patient's clinical condition? Where do they need to go and how quickly can we get the, an airplane to them? Because we're, our, our mandate ultimately is to transport patients to the hospital. And while we will leave patients in community, depending on their suitability, that's why we exist for our nine one one system is to get patients to hospital. And so we adapt due to the distances because it's now our, our mandate to get these patients to either generally Fort St. John or Watson Lake, no longer just back into community. So it does change, Mr. Mayor. And that's also why we've pushed hard to have that frontline on the ground leadership during these circumstances, because then we have one person with that oversight to just make sure the system is working for the citizens of Northern Rockies municipality and that we are getting the patients to the closest hospital or most appropriate hospitals quickly as we can.
Right. So then if the decision is to fly somebody, I'm hearing that you are prepared to use billers as long as it's not as long as it's not too bad. But if you have to bring in the provincial, your own aircraft, where are you holding people? So that was a bit of an issue, I think, for us. And then you're, you know, and it's been explained to me that your personnel are trained to deal with people in the back of an ambulance and, and I get that. But if we're waiting on a flight, we've got a perfectly acceptable hospital here, you know, what's the barrier from us holding people in the hospital? Instead of the back of an ambulance, waiting for a plane to get here from wherever it has to come from. So I, I hear that that potentially is a barrier or perhaps a delay to, to critical care or to healthcare. Can, can you help me with to understand that piece of it? Where do we hold people while we're waiting?
I'm happy to take that one on, Mr. Mayor. So our, our normal process is to transport in a nine one one environment, we would transport to the Fort Nelson Hospital. And that patient would then be assessed by the physicians and then the staff on site. If the acuity of the patient warrants specialized care that is able to be delivered in, say, Prince George or Vancouver, that call is then made through the regular process. Our emergency physician online support comes in, into the toe on that. And the, the search for the bed then actually becomes a factor as well. So the, the hospital in Fort Nelson is actually looking after that patient until such time as our critical care paramedics can fly into the community and then expedite transfer to the higher level of care, usually in the south.
Right, but not when the emergency department is on a service interruption. Right? So that's when you have to hold because you don't have somebody local to help or the personnel is not there to help. So you're, you're holding them in the ambulance or, or making the worst decision, I guess, to, to try to transport them by ground four hours or five hours if necessary. So under normal circumstances, I heard you, Vic, and that we know that that happens. But when we're in a service interruption, then what? Because they're, they're not able to use the emergency department. So, so go ahead.
Sorry, I'll defer this one to Jonathan, just in the, in the sense that from a ground environment situation, the patients are picked up and transported to the nearest available hospital. If there is a service interruption, then correct me if I'm wrong, Jonathan, but they would go to the next available hospital? Is that, is that correct?
Correct. I, I see Jenna's unmuted. Did you want to take this one, Jenna? Or if not, I'm happy to give it a go.
Either or. Yeah. Hi, everyone. I'm Jenna. I'm the Senior Provincial Executive Director for Interior North for Ground Operation. Coming to you today from the traditional and unceded territory of the Silk Nation in the Okanagan. So thank you for having us virtually up in the north. So to, to go back to your question with the service interruption, when those get lodged, the hospital is, is not the option. So that is when we do facilitate the transfer via other means, so either by ground or by air. Does that better answer your question?
No, I think we're understanding that. But until such a time, so you, you've got somebody, you've, you've got this, this great network that makes the, the decision about what the next level of care needs to be. You've talked about that virtual help and, you know, and, and these, these other paramedics can help the paramedics locally. The decision is made to transfer somebody out of town. And it's four hours away, which puts in some circumstances, the patient and your own staff at risk. Because it's four hours with no other community. It's not like coming to Smithers to Prince George. There's ten communities between there that can assist your paramedics if they have to. But from here to Fort St. John, there's a difference. And so if you feel as part of your assessment that a flight is what's necessary, then you have to hold that person until that plane gets here. They've got to be held. And so are they being held in the back of an ambulance? Are they being held in a building that we supply? Or are they being held in the emergency room at a functioning hospital that happens to be on diversion?
So the, the answer to that currently is the back of the ambulance because when there is a service interruption, the, the emergency department isn't functional and isn't an option for us to access because there are no staff.
Right. So there's, there's where I guess we can start talking about a potential barrier to, you know, to the, or a a system failure, I suppose, there. You've got people who are capable, if they can hold them in the back of an ambulance, it means they have the the skills to deal with, with the patient, at least to the level of the equipment that you have in the back of an ambulance. To hold somebody in the back of an ambulance at the airport or at the ambulance station just seems cruel to me when you have a hospital right there. And so what are the barriers to allowing your people into the hospital? Into the emergency ward? Is it training? Is it? Is it W C B rules? Is it liability issues? What are the concerns where that are keeping people out of, keeping your people out of that facility, which, which seems to the layperson, the appropriate place to hold somebody? Now, I get the, the nurse is not available. We get that. Is it union issues? What are the issues that prevent your people from actually using that hospital while we're waiting for for a flight to come from wherever it has to come to Prince George or Vancouver?
I see Jenny's hand is up, so I'll let you go first.
Yeah, through the chair. Thank you. I, it's, you know what? It's an excellent question. And I'm, I'm a little bit embarrassed to say, I, I personally haven't pondered it. And I think, you know, though it, it brings up a really good system barrier. And I'm a little bit curious why we haven't run into this question yet. And maybe we have, and I just haven't been involved in the conversation. I'll look to the others. But I think, I think this is something that if you can let us take away, this is an example of something we will need to take away and, and just really understand what are the barriers? Because I don't, I don't think we can list them all here and even understand. You know, if we do, if we do identify them, who do we need to speak with within each level? If, if, you know, say we identify three or four. Because I think you've thrown out a few that are probably pieces that we need to go away and look at. And I think it makes a lot of sense to, to investigate this and better understand because you make an excellent point. Why would we, why would we keep the patient in the back of the ambulance during a service interruption? And quite honestly, I think we don't have that, that answer for you right now, but we will get it.
Yeah. And, and that's one of the things, because of the time, right, which is the distance required. Normally, you'd probably just go to Dawson Creek or you, you know, if you were in Fort St. John or Chetlin or wherever, that, that makes a lot of sense. So thank you for, for understanding them. There, you know, might be something there that, that, that we can work on.
And this, this, oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, didn't mean to interrupt. But I think too, it also is a great question because the uniqueness of Fort Nelson and your hospital situation that, as Jenny mentioned, that we can take this away. Most other hospitals on service interruption or on diversion, I just lock the doors. There's no getting into it. It is physically locked out of the building for both us and the public. Whereas you all know with your hospital, because they keep it open for the, the long-term care patients as well as the, the ongoing diagnostics day to day. It is, it is a different situation. So we'll work on, as Jenny mentioned, taking that away and looking at your unique situation.
Yeah. I mean, we know and are doing what we can to get people on these service interruptions not to present themselves at the hospital. Right? Because they show up in the hospital and, and the person at the front door says, sorry, we're on diversion. You're going to have to call nine one one. And of course, they're standing right in the door of the hospital. You, you see how that, you know, how that, how that doesn't work very well. So these are, for sure, these are, these are questions that we want to work with you on. We're prepared to work with you and, and, and Northern Health. And whoever else it takes to, to try to see this as a different situation and that needs to be addressed. So I just want to open it up to, to the other councilors to see if they have any questions because I've taken a lot of time. So. Counselor Gerwing, please.
Yeah, Counselor Lorraine Gerwing, thank you so much for all of the support that you have provided during these service interruptions. Like it was, like the mayor has, has stated that it was our first time experiencing it. The community was, you know, justifiably upset. And, but I have to tell you that I, and along with many other community members, really felt supported by B C Emergency Health Services. So yes, kudos to you all for making that a reality for us. I just wanted to add something else that you could please take away. Well, a few other things that you could please take away. I'll be brief. There are some local doctors that have also indicated that if we had a severe trauma situation and the hospital was on service disruption, that they would be more than willing to come in to deal with that, to lend support to B C Emergency Health Services. And I don't know that that has been recorded on your end anywhere. Maybe it has been. But if it hasn't been, then I would ask that you take that piece away too. I mean, I, I have written down here that I really hope that we can somehow work together. And I know that this is pie in the, eye in the, how is it? Pie in the sky, pie in the sky. But because we're such an isolated, small community, I just think that we have solutions here that can work for here. Doesn't mean that they're going to work in Fort St. John or Dawson Creek or Chetwin, but they could work for here. So I would really like to be involved in and have you all thinking about how can we utilize all of the healthcare professionals in our community to avoid service disruptions? So, you know, if like, as far as I know, the service disruptions that we've had to date, well, except for the first one, have been nursing shortages. It wasn't that there weren't doctors available. So how, how could we use paramedics to triage people? You know, it's just like those types of situations, we could go through those scenarios with the lens of a small, isolated community, not the lens of a city or, you know, it's just something that could be unique to Fort Nelson. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention that, and I don't mean you personally, but yet again, we are sending people out of the community. In this case, a service interruption, we take them to wherever, Fort St. John, Dawson Creek, like, who knows where they have gone. And they have no way to get home. Like, we have to stop just taking people out of town. They get treated, they get released, they have no way to get home. You know, the buses don't run every day. Like what happens while we're waiting for B C bus or the Northern Health bus? Or what if you don't have the twelve dollars or however much it costs these days? So just just taking people there is yes, it's solving the immediate problem, but we have no way to get them home. I mean, and that's with B C Emergency Health Services, you face that all the time, right? But on a service interruption, I think that that needs to be at least maybe a starting point where the B C government can step in and say, no, like, this is a problem. We have promised that this service would be available in your home community. It's not. We have to take you somewhere else. And the government, I believe, should be paying to get It's not. We have to take you somewhere else. And the government, I believe, should be paying to get our people back home. Those were my two points. Thank you very much.
I don't think there was a question there, but do you have any comments? Might you have any comments with respect to uh, to what Counselor Gerwing has said? No?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. I I have trouble seeing that yellow hand in the red background.
Well, I can I can just speak up as well through the chair. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a couple of points there. I think um, if if it does set anything a little bit at ease, whenever there is a service interruption, nine one one by de facto becomes the triaging body. So, you know, regardless of where paramedics are, whether they're operating out of um, a a remote situation or they're showing up in person or they're at the hospital, uh, they they are the de facto body conducting the triage and then making the decisions. Um, just to, you know, steer that down that road. That is what's happening. It it does put a tremendous amount of strain on our service, but as we've described, you know, these are the pieces that we put in place in order to to meet that. The other, the other piece I just wrote down is is that is that understanding the enormous pressure it puts on patients when we do take them out of community because we have to. And we recognize that that strain and stress that it does put on patients, especially in situations like yours where there are no easy answers to return them home. And we can be advocates with you in that. And um, and we are having these conversations quite a bit. Because this, you're, that that is not a, you you are not alone in in saying that this is becomes a problem. And um, so you know, what what I can tell you for sure is that we have been and we will continue to be advocates to try to help move through these situations where where patients are being taken out of community. And then how do they get home? Um, that that I can offer you for sure, and we will continue to do that.
Great, thanks. And don't forget about the doctors if there's, we could somehow, I don't know. I don't know what you need to set up on your end, but if there is a major trauma, the local doctors have said that they would be willing to um, provide services during the interruption. So I think that I don't want us to lose sight of that.
If I can uh, add to that, um, thank you through the chair, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I appreciate that I I think you're right, Counselor Gerwin, that that wasn't on record right away. This just came to our attention as far as the doctors um, offering their services and severe trauma through Northern Health Authority. And we do have an upka- uh, upcoming meeting between uh, B C H S and Northern Health to discuss this and a few other uh, unique situations for service interruptions in Fort Nelson, I believe, next week. It's definitely within the next two weeks. So um, this was brought to our attention by Northern Health. Um, I can't offer what the outcome will be, but just that we certainly are going to um, explore all these options and that this is on our agenda in the next couple of weeks. Uh, myself and um, our executive director uh, that works with the health authorities will be on it, as well as some of the uh, senior leadership from Northern Health. So I'm hoping that we'll get some answers in that way, as well as we're working with uh, Northern Health to try to get some answers around this uh, piece of getting patients home, that if we have to take them to out of community, how do we get them home? Because that is a hundred percent a barrier to care and and um, people don't want to leave community if they don't know how they're going to get back to it.
Yeah.
And um, just on a very aside, uh, thank you, Counselor Gerwin, for your uh, cookies to the station. I didn't get to see when you brought them in, but they, I partook of some. They were delicious. And I know the whole crew appreciated it. So that just went such a long way. So thank you so much for that.
Yeah, you're most welcome. And I forgot one point, and I'll be even quicker. But just um, regarding the Villar's air, like, I am so pleased to hear that we are utilizing um, those services. And I hope that that just grows and grows and grows. It just makes so much sense from just from an environmental perspective alone, just doesn't make sense to have a plane flying from Prince George to Fort Nelson. And then you know how it all goes, right? So if it, yeah, anyways. So I'm just so pleased that we're using Villar's air and hope to see more of that. And you're most welcome for the cookies and chocolates anytime.
Are there any other questions from counsel? Staff? Okay, well, we uh, thank you very much, uh, all of you. Uh, all five of you. I'm gonna list your names, because I'm gonna forget for sure. Um, Jenny, I guess I'll speak to you as the CEO and uh, we thank you very much, you and your staff, for the work you are doing, for the work you continue to do, and uh, the work you've done for us in the past. Uh, we really appreciate it. We certainly are looking forward to working with you on on some of these questions uh, that we have to make this this service better. And and if we've got to work with Northern Health and yourselves, we're fully prepared to do that. And if we need to lobby whoever we need to lobby to uh, you know, to overcome some of those barriers potentially. Uh, because you might not be in a position to be able to deal with with some of those barriers. Where where we might have to take on some kind of a campaign to change policy. It, you know, or or put, put the appropriate practices in place. We're certainly a willing partner, and we thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here and um, I think it goes without saying that um, you know, it it will take all of us to move through these more challenging times. And um, how much we've appreciated, you know, both the critical insight and also the support and the the positivity. It goes a long way. And um, and to the local managers and directors and unit chiefs on the ground, their their ability to to learn from this and start to build out new models that better fit communities. I think that's something that that we're all taking away. And it does take conversations like this to really understand what the needs are that are that are specific to your region and to your issues. And um, thank you. Thanks for taking the time to to help work through this with us. And um, we're all in it together. So thank you very much.
Thanks for your time today.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you all. Good night.
Okay, good talk. Yeah. Yeah. So uh, there are no additions. So that brings us to the introduction of the twenty twenty four draft budget.
Thanks, Mary. Uh, we can spend uh, twenty minutes or so, till six o'clock. The intent tonight was just to get a bit of a bit of a brief for on the uh, briefing on on where we are with with the budget and the process, just to acknowledge the process is because we continue to evolve it. We've seen some evolution last year. I just want to make sure at, you know, going up front this time, this year, we we are uh, just clear and have councils less in terms of what the process looks like. And um, similarly, there's as part of the evolution, continuous improvement, there's some changes to the way the document may look. Uh, we try to keep the same feel, but in terms of how the information's presented. Um, Trevor will uh, add to it, but uh, and fill in some gaps here, but or provide some detail. But it's, it's that combination of having it linked where if you look at numbers, it's it's closely linked, it's a financial plan essentially. And it's closely linked to um, documentation and auditing reports and our year-end financial statements and whatnot. When you, with the ability to be able to start connecting numbers, if you really want to get that level of detail, if you don't need to. Um, that's what we're here for. But at the same time, it's it's just starting to provide an alignment, and that's a lot of work that Trevor did also. So we figured, given that uh, there was a little bit of time tonight, kind of give a little bit of a preview, answer any questions you may have. Um, and uh, and and go from there, because we intend to, uh, right now, we intend to start to hit the ground running Monday at noon.
So tonight I don't have a report, but um, this is a little bit ad hoc. However, what I'd like to share tonight is is really aligned with the report that is at the beginning of the binder. Um, but to follow up with what C O Barry was sharing, um, the main thing or one of the main things that we want to talk about is sort of what our understanding of the expectation is when we start to to have counsel deliberate the the budget as presented. So currently, we're scheduled to start those deliberations next week, March fourth. Um, and the idea is that we're taking it a deep dive at that time, um, in order to come up with a proposed budget that counsel wants to present to the public. Um, and then following that public consultation piece, any information would come back. Um, and then counsel would have that opportunity to consider those public comments, any changes that have come up in between and and come up with the final budget. So that's, that's really the the key sort of process. And then how we go about achieving some of that is really about walking through how the budget binder is laid out for us. And there isn't a lot of change, but there are a couple. So in the past, we've started with an overview. We've gone into operating um, and special projects, and then gone into grants to groups, followed by a discussion and deeper dive into capital projects. And the the one ch- one change with that sort of overarching approach is that we just simply moved grants to groups um, to the end after our discussion with special projects and the other types of capital projects. So that's essentially the flow that we've presented to you. And within that, um, this is where I've started, sort of stuck my thumb into the pie a bit and started changing some terminology. And maybe changing isn't quite the right word. I think I what I've tried to achieve is more intention with the words that we're using. And what's happened there is uh, some of the words you might be used to seeing in previous reports have changed. Um, and I'll just touch on a couple of the major ones. Carryforwards is um, something that we've seen in the reports, both from the perspective of projects or or activities that were started in in a previous year and have continued as well as as a source of funding. So when we look at our our project listings and we see the expenditures and then how we're going to fund those projects, whether it's grants or what we've seen in the past is carryforwards or from the tax levy. When we used the term carryforward as part of that funding source, we were really duplicating what we were saying, um, because it's already identified. If it's a project that was started in a previous year, that the mechanism that we're using to bring that into the current year is to carry it forward. But the funding for that, which essentially happened in that previous year, will now come from a specific source. And that's either the grants that were were originally budgeted budgeted for, or in the case where a project was taxed in a previous year, that budget would have went into general surplus. And so now it's appropriate to take it out of general surplus in the current year. So I tried to describe that change as well in the report. But um, you will see that difference within the the project reporting especially. One other thing that uh, I introduced was the terminology of transfers. And and so when we've considered in the past um, activities that have really hit our accumulated surplus or general surplus, um, we've, we've simply said that. Either we've called it a carryforward or we've said surplus and that type of thing. And transfers is really an overarching term that describes our activities with surplus. And they can be contributions or transfers to surplus or or transfers from. Uh, so you'll recognize that as well. Um, the other main thing, am I going too deep? No? Okay, good. One of the other things that um, I've introduced or we've introduced this year is budgeting for amortization. And that'll be, I've I've provided a a bit of an explanation in the report as well. Um, but just for our purposes here, amortization is something we've always recognized for our actuals, but we haven't budgeted for. And what amortization is, is a way for us to recognize the cost of long-lived assets, like our buildings and vehicles. Um, it just, it's a systematic way of taking that cost and applying it to particular years. Um, I think my example in the report, I think it's pretty straightforward. It's it's a decent one to take a look at. But you will see that. And now it's an interesting concept as well, because it's, it's an actual expense that we incur for financial purposes. And so it can beg the question, where is that funded from? Well, in the past, it's been funded from surplus. It's just been a reduction in the value of our surplus. And it's going to continue to be that way. That's, that's how we're presenting it. What this change is doing is making it transparent. The other thing, I think.
If I can, that that helps the budget. No, that helps the annual report to be more reflective of the budget.
Exactly. So when, when the next time I'm up at the table, will hopefully be to present to you unaudited financial statements. And so what we would see, what we will see for twenty twenty three, when we're looking at um, the last fiscal year, is that because we didn't budget for amortization, yet it's included in the actuals, there's a variance. We can explain it. It's always explainable, but there's still that variance. And what we would hope to achieve by recognizing it in the budget is that variance is eliminated, or at least reduced to a reasonable level.
In future years.
In for twenty twenty four and future years, yeah. Good. Um, one other key part and is within the budget binder and the reports, we've, we've tried to come down to the tax levy. So depending on the area that we're looking at, whether it's operating activities for the entire N R M or operating activities for one of our service areas or departments, we show what the tax levy impact is for that area. And I think it's been an important piece of information for counsel in the past. And and it's a, it's a way for us to evaluate changes uh, year over year. So we are keeping that consistent. Um, and you'll see that throughout the reports where there's a tax levy component to what you're looking at. And the reason I'm bringing it up is because the tax levy is property taxes. Um, but you'll also see that there's a property tax line. And so the question might be, why is there two lines for the same thing? So within the report, um, our property taxes are composed of of a few things. The the levy, but also frontage. Um, and other related things. A big portion of it is the one percent utility fee that we um, get from B C Hydro in lieu of property taxes. And that breakout is in the report as well, just to identify the difference between the tax levy as property tax and those other components that you'll continue to see. And I think that's all I really wanted to hit on. Um, are there any questions?
Question, please.
Um, I haven't gone through the binder yet, so I, this might be in here. But so when you say that carryforward, we're not going to see that anymore. So how will, and it's going to be coming from surplus? So how will we know that the twenty thousand dollars is left over from last year? Like, because will that, will it be different, whether it's from surplus? Or like, will there, will that be different? Like, will we know that?
Yeah, it's a, it's an excellent question. And and I know I struggled with it by changing this approach and and not talking about carryforward as the as the funding source, how were we going to portray that information or get that information across here? And there's a couple of ways that's happening. Um, within the project descriptions, the project profiles, um, we, we still do see the terminology carryforward. Um, from time to time, it's, it's not absolutely consistent throughout, but it recognizes that it's a project that was budgeted for or began in a previous year. And that's the primary giveaway for whether it's a carryforward. So um, along with that wording that you'll find in in along with that wording that you'll find in, in many of the projects is a flag as well. So in our project listings, there's a new project flag. And so if it doesn't say yes, we can know that that project began in a previous year. And then we can start to ask questions where that project says funding from general surplus. Okay, well, that makes sense that that's a carry forward, right? That's a carry forward project. And it's funding from general surplus. So there's a couple of ways that you, I hope you're able to identify that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll, I'll look at having a general surplus piece too, because at a staff, we don't determine when we're going to full funds arbitrarily from general surplus. It's if there's been contribution, it's like, I'll call it funds that weren't utilized in previous year for that continued project, right? So I'll round number twenty thousand dollar project last year, it was taxed twenty thousand dollars. Ten of it was done last year. Ends remaining, but it's not completed yet. That ten would go into surplus. And then come back out this year. Right? That's how it's, that's how it's, which is essentially the old carry forward term. Um, but it's just, we wouldn't arbitrarily say, let's just uh, access X amount of funds from surplus just for the sake of doing it, right? It's, 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 it's very uh,
It's more specific.
It's a very specific. Yeah. And, and, and the projects will acknowledge it's previous year's project and then of course what the funds are related to.
So it's actually recognizing the specific transactions that are happening, right? Because you might think that it's just a carry forward but in actual fact, it went into surplus and now you're taking it out. Where before it was just straight across. The, the budget now is recognizing that transaction. In all the projects that
Yes.
Didn't get finished.
From a financial perspective, from, from financial statements, it was, it was going into surplus and out again. The process that we, we followed in the binder basically sits straight across. In actual fact, the background was going in and back out again. From a financial perspective, and that's that continued evolution of the process to get that alignment from a financial plan perspective to make this alignment while keeping it to the best of our ability, uh, judge, the ability to digest it, to council be able to take it and, and, and understand it. Right? So the uh, going through the document and working through this process, it's, it's not confusing. It's just a change. Of the, of the, of the, of the.
So an auditor, if an auditor was going from whatever investigation they were doing back into the budget, they could follow it uh, without asking a question. It's just, it's just more transparent. Transparent the right word?
I think so.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
One of the, yeah, one of the things as well that I was finding when, when I would look at the terminology we use for carry forward, uh, we were actually using it for three different purposes. And so by, by changing this approach, I, I think it makes clear what we intend by carry forward. That means uh, project or activity that wasn't completed in a previous period and we're carrying that forward. And then the funding source and we were using it in a couple of different ways. Um, because a carry forward from general surplus and a carry forward from reserve funds, we were, we were using this terminology. And um, they're different things. So my hope is that it will become clear once we work through the project listings and the projects.
Good. Questions, Councilor Ophir?
Will the surplus uh, fund have other contributions other than saying a project that wasn't completed? Um, that gets put into the surplus and then it gets taken up the next year. What are the other contributions that could go into that account? And let's say we have some sort of initiative where we don't want to raise the taxes and just say, well, we want to take it out of surplus. Does that um, is that detrimental to funds that were put into that account that have a specific use? Or are there funds in there that don't have a specific use and are just there for maybe a rainy day?
That's an interesting question. Um, I'm going to say there are no funds in there for a rainy day. We're, we're, we're intentional, okay? But it, it's such an interesting question because what do we transfer into general surplus? And essentially there's, there's generally one answer and that's uh, the annual operating surplus. That goes in and then things get transferred out or transferred around.
One of the things that we've done though, it's part of that piece too. So when, when Trevor talks and says it's intentional, we give an example, last year we communicated to council that, you know, uh, the fire department had ordered a bunch of fair amount of equipment, turnout gear, helmets, S C B As. Supply chain delays, we weren't able to purchase that particular equipment. So it made sense because we already taxed for that specific item. But it, it went in the surplus, but we pulled it back out to offset it from the fall. Um, because it was, it did make sense to tax twice for the same item. We did a similar thing when it comes to the training and development because we intend to train and develop. Uh, so if there's items that we can't that we were already taxed to do a specific, uh, s- specific activity, then we would, we would utilize funds instead of taxing the same item twice. In terms of general operations, it is highly frowned upon to pull from surplus funds to offset general operations because that's, that, that's, that's the I'll say it's an unwritten rule because it's not technically a rule, but it's, it's written all over the place. Um, in terms of funding to fund your operations from a, from a, from a service level perspective is, is from taxation. Right? That's, that, or should, should, I should say, the remaining funds at the end of the day that you don't have grants for or whatnot, that's, that should be taxation from your various revenue sources, which a lot of times, and we're going to speak a bit more of that during this budget process from a revenue perspective, is understanding the revenues. And one of the projects is to review service levels and the revenue sources are tied to those service levels because sometimes like it's missed is, is, is when we reduce revenues or offset revenues, whatever reason, it directly impacts the, the, the level of service or the taxation required to, to, to offset, right? So, so if you pull fifty thousand dollars of the revenue that's out of your, out of your budget, however, however that's done, if it's to waive fees or to, to reduce a cost or whatever, you will add fifty thousand dollars to your tax levy. Uh, unless you reduce that service. The budget you have in front of you, the document is, is basically status quo service levels. Cause uh, there's been another discussion to council to, to adjust them. Um, it does include the additional, a couple additional uh, uh, the, the discussion around the, the, the health piece, the additional resourcing to the health component. And it does include additional capacity uh, from fire rescue that was been discussed previously. So that's built into this document. Um, in terms of how the document is laid out, just to add a little bit more, you'll, as Trevor mentioned, you'll, you'll see the operations component. We'll get into that, you know, we'll get into this. A little bit different this time around compared to previous years is before during this, because we used to call it the preliminary stage and we used to present the budget to council. We'd get into more of a presentation perspective. It was, it was less deliberation and more presentation and then we bring it to the public. This, the intention now is to get more into deliberations. So council, we're not looking for approved budgets, but it's time for council to decide when they propose this budget to the public. Do you support this budget? And are there things in it that you don't support, like to pull out? Or maybe you're asking the question, the support. It's a, it's sort of s- s- specific support from the public. But the operational component, when you look at it, basically supports the service levels that we currently provide to the community. When we get into special projects and uh, major maintenance, those are items that are typically operational components, but we separate them out of the operations from year to year so that we can reduce the peaks and valleys that might occur. So it provides you an opportunity as council to compare year to year versus having six twenty thousand dollar projects, special projects uh, that will add a hundred twenty thousand dollars to a budget. And then you can't compare it to last year per se because it's, it's apples to bananas versus apples to apples. So, so, and that's something that we've been doing for years now is to re-separate the special projects and any, any of the major maintenance projects. So we can help prevent or, or, I, I'll flip it, help provide a document that you can compare year to year operationally. When we get into the renewal projects, um, those projects, we're not, we're, we're actually, Trevor's had a great job showing a, um, a continuity plan for the contribution to the reserve funds in those, for those various renewal funds. Because we do the annual contributions to uh, to, to support the, our, our asset management or renewal program. This year, we're going to be, you know, the request from council is essentially it's not looking for specific projects to s- approval within the renewal program because those are the projects required to maintain our assets. What we're looking for is the funding to support those projects. We'll go through the projects, you know, one by one with council. But the difference is we're actually asking for a a uh, a, a resolution to, to support project X to change out this waterline here because it needs to be done to support the service level that council's already directed us to do. We'll be asking you for the funding mechanism to say, these are the contribution to those reserves um, and the, and the expense out of those reserves. But we will go through them project by project. It just, it just further defines the, the role in terms of the policy direction that council provides through service level perspective. If it's a new asset or an upgraded asset, absolutely, because that's a change in service level. And then council will be will, will determine if we spend that money. We'll, we'll pick on the, the pathway over uh, um, well, it's already, it's already approved, but it would have been, that's a, that's, that's a new asset that's going to the museum. Um, work towards uh, increasing the heat and the secondary ice surface. Those are things that aren't renewal. They come out of, that's a new asset and essentially an additional service level which costs additional funds on top of what our, our normal plan is. So, so and we'll walk through that piece as we go through the document, but that's again, when you, when we lay, how the document's been laid out, that's, that's, that's how we plan to walk into it. In the meantime, don't hesitate like this week, if you're going through it and have any questions, anything in it that stumps you, don't hesitate to give myself or uh, Trevor a call or send an email or whatnot, um, help you walk through it. Um, because the more I have an understanding once, in front of me, when we hit the road or hit the ground running on Monday, the better.
An important change as well, um, is with regards to the grants to groups and, and it'll be evident when you go through that section that it's just how we moved the golf course operations out of grants to groups and into operation where we'll find that under relegation.
Yeah, I think it'll be good to ex- explain that transition, how, how that hap- or how that's happening, because it's not complete.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll be able to discuss all that transition. Let's, in terms of funding perspective, we can go get, if someone wants to, if council wants that. Get, get into the hood of what's the difference between this year's and last year, last year's funding. Um, because it's not, it's not bearing into, buried into an accounting process to say, oh, it's all, it's all, yeah, it's, it's, it's quite easy to differentiate, you know, what the cost, because the golf course has its own line item.
Yeah.
Um, but it's, it's been rolled in based on the development of the, but you still have to circle back to council. Once we get through this here, we still need to circle back and discuss the government transfer policy. But one thing council did provide direction as part of that process was outlining where the various organizations sat in terms of visiting municipal service or community service. The golf course fell under the community service component or municipal service component, right? So, what's that? And track, yeah, and, and told her to same. So they would, they've been rolled into uh, those particular operational uh, items. And we'll get to that. We'll, we'll get into under the hood of that, answer any question, get into whatever detail council wishes into that piece, including that transition piece. So, because this year is a bit of a transition.
Good. Questions? I love a question. You all have your books. You're all excited to get opening and get, get reading through them. Good. Good. Okay, well, if there's no other questions, that uh, is there any public that's interested in asking a question online? No? Okay. Nothing to rise and report or take to the next meeting. We are adjourned. Till six thirty. Thank you very much.